Good luck to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. So you do have a warm present looks like. So this is where we're going to begin the meeting so we can take your things that we need to take care of tonight. Just come and sit back there. Uh, first, Mr. Brokaw.
Johnny Garner.
Here.
Terry Love.
Here.
Larry Blackstone.
Here.
Al McKenna.
Here.
Jackie Butler.
Here.
Jim Crow.
Here.
Dan Moore.
Here.
Russell Blake.
Here.
Buddy Richardson.
Here.
Jerry Emerson.
Here.
Sandra Hyer.
Here.
Joseph Valero.
Here.
Barry Smith.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Chris Simmons.
Here.
Terry Bell.
Here.
John Wells.
Here.
Mike Alexander.
Here.
Eighteen residents.
President. So either of the forms will proceed with the meeting. The next item is approval of minutes of the January meeting. All y'all get those in the mail?
I approve. Motion made secondly approve the minutes.
Motion made by Commissioner Blackstone, consecutively by Commissioner Richardson. Any questions, corrections, or amendments or anything? If not, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close enough, motion adjourned. The next item is budget amendments.
Hello.
Hello.
We just have two budget amendments tonight in County Journal. One, the first one is for the city election that was held back in January. They're reimbursing us for every complaint that we were out on that. And the second one was for property, delinquent property sale. County bid back end of property, bought property, got it back in our name. Having questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Brokaw.
Second. Motion made secondly approve the budget amendments presented. Any questions? Come here. If not, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close enough, motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Canada. A little for ethical business. Thank you, she's got somewhere to go.
Uh, this is my son. And here's my daughter. Um, we have some that out. If you notice, I know I used to be building funds and schools spent $100 because it's passed through the past couple months. Uh, we had a annual five day Saturday, October 29th, which Terry Bell didn't end it. Did she get the bill? Uh, well, he had the place.
He's still here.
Yes, he is. And Al McKenna was kind enough to come and welcome the racers and I really appreciate that. And we made $3,200 on the race. And we have, we had book sale in February. These books sell like, like that, raised $565. I think that's the most we've ever done. We had a lot of donations from local residents. And also, Miss Mary Allen, when she passed her mother family, asked that donations be given to the library. So that was very kind and we got some really generous donations because of that. Most of them went to building fund and then we got nice cash to wipe. We've had several nice donations for that.
Very encouraging, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The next item is the continuing budget for the resolution for Chester County School. This don't have to do every year. All it is, it just seem that we're gonna, we will at least fund the school as what you did last year.
I vote the resolution.
Second. Motion made secondly for the resolution to be approved, our continuation of school budget. Any discussion? Please, Brokaw on that. It's a resolution. We do it all.
Continuing resolution.
Continuing resolution, yeah.
What about now? If it's too much, we'll have to have Brokaw.
He knows nothing, this is not something, it's just continuing. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close enough, motion adjourned. Anyone here for a project graduation? Someone who spoke bigger than I, that was, leave that.
I talked to the person that spearheaded project graduation, but I talked to them tonight, but they were also doing their hamburgs tonight, so that may be worth it.
Well, we take, we can take care of it. Every year we give a project graduation $500 and that's what they will be asking for if they were here, so.
Make the motion. It's a budget item.
It's a budget item.
How about the motion? You give $500.
Exactly.
Motion made secondly, we give the $500 for project graduation. Any questions? If not, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close enough, motion adjourned. The next item is something I gotta go with y'all. This is something the state requires us to do. It's, it's the way we can keep our three star program. And all of what it is, is I'm telling y'all, and y'all have looked at the budget, uh, the, look at here, indeed, that's what it is. Dead man with pots, all y'all gotta copy this, I think. This is something that we have to do every year. And also, we've got, we've got to, we've got to tell y'all that this is on file at the Controller's Office in Nashville. And also, before we can borrow any money, we have to write to the Controller and ask for it, ask their permission to borrow money, which I hope we don't borrow any of it.
Have we been getting this annual report here, due in the third of, of that?
Let's see, what we found. Page five. What's that under?
Under transaction. Number two, annual debt support shall be submitted to the county commission by June 30th this year.
That's the, that's, that's all. Yeah, right?
Yes, we, we've done all that here.
Okay. That means you gotta show that we discussed this and what's the question, asked on it and, and like I said, all this is just some of the states.
I vote for this.
Motion made secondly approve this discussion. Is any, any question? I know what kind of vague, but whether it is or not, if not, say aye.
Aye.
Close enough, motion adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think the representative for project graduations here, we already approved it, but can we let her come up and make some ourselves?
Sure.
Hey. I'm sorry, I was in the, I was told the wrong location for the meeting and I have been standing outside in the rain, waiting for the doors to the courthouse to magically open.
You still a little bit better than him. You're on top of me.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry I'm late and I interrupted everything. I'm just an ambassador, I'm definitely not in charge of project graduation. But all, all we were here to do is just to ask for some money to help support project graduation. What it is, a lot of you have had seniors, children who've gone through Chester County, they probably participated in project graduation. And all it is, is just an event held the night of graduation. It's held all night for a lot of different reasons, just for the seniors to be able to have a night with our, you know, final acts together before, you know, we go off. And it, it really keeps us safe after the night of graduation. It helps us, you know, to stay out of trouble and just have one last opportunity to be together and share our memories. We have different prizes and events, we all get to eat together and play some games. And it's just a really good opportunity for the seniors to kind of reflect back on their years of high school. You know, a lot of them have been at Chester County Schools for 13 years and imagine that's the last day that we're ever in school together. So it's just really cool. It's a cool experience and we've done a lot of fundraisers and they've been pretty successful right now. Smithland's is packed now for our project graduation. But it's really hard to keep up with the financial requirements of such a huge event with about 220 graduating seniors. That's a lot of seniors to feed, we could eat a lot. So, thank you though, for your donation and I'm so sorry, I was late. And that's not my MO.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
That was good.
Thank you.
Where will you be? How old is your issue?
Um, it's gonna be at Free Hardman and they've been nice enough to let us have that space for free, but we have to provide all of our own food and games, transportation to free and it's, it takes a lot, takes a lot of effort too. We've worked with them.
He has a question. Thank you, I'm late. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda to discuss, that is a nursing home building. We've had discussion on that. I will tell you, I've talked to Commissioner Sheen about four or five times in the last four weeks. He is, he does, he is talking pretty serious about building one. Of course, you can't guarantee he will be on. Talking with him one day last week, if he wanted to, he would let us wait until, but maybe he can make a decision on it. But I think all we're doing is just putting, putting things off. Let's either do it or don't do it, or put it up. If you wanna put it off, people would have better put it off. But I've been asked what do I think about it? I got mixed emotions on it. A lot of people has talked about, we won't, we won't have any say so anymore, which I never don't have a say so anyway. It leads to him. He's got the license. A lot of similar on stuff, which, which have been a lot of similar on with, because my dad was on the commission back when the plan was built the first time. And you know, it's, it's, I've talked to my dad in far as, and I honestly don't know what's best. If he builds a new one, we're better off to sell it. If you don't build one, we're better off to keep it. And anybody's guess is, is as good as mine is, but he did tell me, last time I talked to him, that he would build one eventually. He just know exactly when, but, um, the reason, I think the reason why he put the deadline on us the other time, you know, at our last meeting, he wanna know something by January the 15th, I believe it was, I think that's what was on there. The way I understand it, the state will probably come out or have a meeting pretty soon to up the reimbursement on, on the beds. If he owns a nursing home and he builds a new one, he can get a higher, higher reimbursement. That's, that was, and he thought they was gonna do that in, in the spring, but he didn't do it now. He thinks they're gonna do it in the summer and, and do it then, I don't know. So it's just up to y'all, if you want to, you know, if you don't want to, or if you wanna wait.
Mr. Mayor, whether we sell or retain that property, what would, what would we accomplish if he got a reimbursement?
We won't, we won't accomplish anything.
Either way.
Either way, that's not, that's not what I was talking about on that. The reason why I said that, that's why he was rushing on to get the, down by the 15th of January.
Does he still propose to give the land back to us in the seven years?
Yes. Or when he builds one.
When he builds one. Is that in writing anywhere?
I didn't write it, it would be in contract. Because he said he won't go up front and it would be put in a contract.
Life still is like?
Yes. What benefit would the county get out of selling this property? Uh, we could keep it and continue to get the rent until he decides somewhere another way he's gonna build it. And if he decides to build a new nursing home, and he does build one, then we'll collect rent up until that time. Right. We'll still have to build it if he, he build one and in the seven years, he can turn around and give it back to us, still get it. I don't see any reason to sell it. But our contract runs out when? Seventeen. March 17th.
We have an option for another five year lease.
Yes. Yeah, but now, he, he can get out of the lease anytime he wants to, after, after, after five years.
Yeah, he doesn't have to. The worst case scenario, the worst case scenario is that if we decide not to sell it, and I've gone by worse now, I didn't take what I, what I think, just tell you, the worst case is two years from February the 28th. He has, we decide to go and sell it, so he said he could be in the one he don't need to have. I can be in one in 18 months. So this June, we don't sell it to him, he can start that building and run out his lease and we could have $560,000, $70,000 in an empty building and we have nothing to do with it. That's the worst case scenario. Well, the county already, Mr. Chairman, the county already has a substantial amount of money in that property deal.
A lot.
A lot of them. And, and I, I don't know if, if he were to vacate it, I don't know if there's anybody that wants to rent the property or lease the property or whatever. But I'm extremely opposed to these corporations buying these counties out and that's exactly what's happening. My next question would be, what's he gonna want to buy next, him or some other corporation to sell this?
Well, I don't know, something we got to do, something we got to lease to rent with the contract on.
There's another way you can look at that, if he does, if, if he does buy it, we sell it to him and we're guaranteed that money, all right? If he builds in two years, we're still guaranteed that money. If he's gonna give a nursing home property all back to us in seven years, we got nothing to lose. We're gonna get about the same money anyway you go. If you're gonna get, if he's gonna get it back, what you got to lose?
There's one other thing there though, if he builds in seven years.
Yeah, that's, that's the truth, that's the deal.
That's the unknown, unknown part of it.
That's essentially what you're on the dice on, is that he doesn't build.
Right, right.
If, if it's not sold, what are you gonna do with the money?
What are they gonna want to do with it? They might as well be off the sale. My suggestion would be to pay off some small loans, we've got maybe $200,000 and $400,000. Get that out of the way.
It would be advantageous for us in one way to let him have it. In fact, he would fix it up a lot more than we can afford to fix it up. We'd have a nicer facility if he puts private rooms and added some rooms and did some other things to it. If it were his, he might do that. If it wasn't his, he probably won't do it. He might fix that one up, decide not to do it. But either, either way, we'd have a nicer facility in the county. I, I hear the one argument about the value, the intrinsic value that building has for the history of the county. And you're just, you're in just as much of a possibility of losing that like not selling it to him. Because if he decides to build a new nursing home, then I see no use for that building as it is. The amount of work, the amount of modifications that will take to make it useful for, if you don't have anything in mind currently, there's current unoccupied space, vacant buildings that have been sitting here for quite some time. I need to think, just, you know how we talked about before about the ambulance service as an instance? We're not in the business of running an ambulance service, especially with the changes in regulations coming down the line of healthcare. That's also gonna impact the nursing home and all that's operated as well. And I don't, I don't think we're quite qualified to take on a subject like that. First of all, that's not an option. I understand what folks feel and what they're thinking about it, but the practical side of that is very, very iffy. Like to make decisions based on emotions, much rather than on data and information.
I think, excuse me, I think on all options to look at is what's best for Chester County, taxpayers and for Chester County, regardless of, like I say, like was mentioned a while ago, all the word is like, is almost like shooting dice. If we sell it to him, we're betting he will build one. If we don't sell it to him, we're betting that he, we're taking it right, right backwards anyway. That's what's the matter with it. And, and who knows, when I asked him about that, he said, I can't give you a definite date when I'll build one. He wouldn't, so you know, it's, um...
Well, first of all, does he have any land to build one on?
No, 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 I don't know. He told me he had found some, I don't know.
And why would he give us a date? He's waiting on us.
That's right. He won't.
Do I, I'd like to hear from the audience or from some of my fellow commissioners here, I'd like, I'd just like for somebody to tell me, if, if we keep that building and end up with it, what will we do with it? Even if we sell it to him and take it back, I'd like for somebody to tell me, can we be a reasonable, a reasonable, what will we do with it?
I would, I would say that the land would be worse than if you didn't have a building on it. It's about, I think it's about four acres of it, maybe all.
It cost you more, what would it cost you to Terry Bell for the, for the land? It cost you more than land's worth, Terry Bell would.
I don't know.
Well, the building, I would like to hear from the, I, I don't know. What do you think we do?
I don't, I won't be constructive in this, but we're talking about, and my understanding, if you're talking about what we're gonna do with the empty building, what I understand that this guy says that he gonna give us back to us, so what are you gonna do with the thing? I mean, he, he still has the building, isn't he?
Well, if the, if the realtor was scaring him now, he's gonna scare you again when he gives it back to you. So he said he would give it back then.
I think, I think what the question is, Carol, excuse me, Carol, is, is, is if we don't sell it to him, are we guaranteed to get out of about $500,000 and $70,000? I believe that's, because we have two years on it.
The way I look at it right now, and I didn't find this out for sure, I found out from you earlier and you and I talked about this and I got the correct figures on it, but I talked to several people of you that's on this board tonight. And I talked to people today and they're, I talked to people that weren't sure what this guy was even paying us now. And I found, and I knew what the figure was, it turned out it was right, but you people know, I talked to several of you and you didn't, didn't know exactly how much rent this guy was paying. And I think that's something we need to know. If this guy is paying $300, $270,000 a year, that's a figure close in.
Carol, the first year it was 270, then it was 2%. This past year, he paid us 286.
Okay. So then, the contract expires in twenty seventeen.
Seventeen.
All right, so you're gonna get what, close to a little over half a million dollars?
Close to $600,000.
Even when his contract expires, what would be wrong, and like you said, there was an urgency on it, when he first wanted to, and you explained that well, what it, what it was, but I don't see any urgency on that. Why not go ahead and enjoy the rent that he's paying now till his contract is up and then decide what he wants to do? And let, let him fill this contract, go ahead, because you'll collect about a half a million dollars. And if this thing goes on, I don't believe he can, if he started in the morning, I don't believe he would have a nursing home ready to go. He'd have to be pretty fast, if he got property acquired and built a $10 or $12 million facility to have it up and going. Did you say 18 months? Somebody did. He'd have to really be hustling to get that going and, and if he, there's nothing wrong with him building a $10 or $12 million facility in Chester County, it would probably be an asset to the county, to have that county facility here. And let him do that if he chooses to do that. But why, why just give up? I'd say by the time that he gets a building up and going, if he continues to pay $270,000 that's gonna raise every year, by the time seven years is over, he would have paid us about what he's offering.
That's right.
To buy the whole thing, in a day and time, he'll own it. And if, I mean, if you sell it to him, he'll own it. If you go ahead, we'll, we'll have what he would have paid us for and it's still belonging to us. And I agree with you, there's, if the building is not a scary thing, I mean, lots could be done with that building. I understand there's, there's room need for maybe county records and things to be stored and different things and, uh, part of that building could be used for different things, maybe move some county offices out there. I think at least we should wait until his contract expires and then see what the climate is then.
I agree with you somewhat, but on the other hand, if we watch our contracts out, he might not give a half million dollars for it.
Well, don't sell it to him. I mean, we don't have to sell it.
That's right, no, we don't have to. But we're still gonna lose money in the end.
I didn't make that call, but if he... He told me the day on the phone that the, if, if we didn't sell it to him by the May meeting, that the offer was off the table. Now, he didn't say that to me other than...
I didn't understand you, Chris.
He said that if we elected not to sell it to him by the May meeting, that he would give us to the May meeting, that he would take the offer off the table.
Well, then that would be good, so then he'd continue paying us rent every month.
Every year.
That would be good. Let him, let him do that. Until he got the new one built. Until he got the new one built.
Yeah, well, I just can't see the man ever building one to start with, but, uh... Now, you understand it's just 20 years in his contract. That's right, that'd be a half a million dollars in... $560,000. Well, over that maybe. So why not get that and then let him decide? Looks like the balls in his, I mean, he needs to do whatever he's gonna do. We're, we're setting pretty good, looks like. We own the property. He's supposed to be paying us every month, every year, I guess.
He is too.
Okay, so then, let him continue to do that and, and if he, I think a facility like that would be an asset to Chester County. Would be getting taxes off of it, if he owned a million, well, I don't know what it would cost, probably, time he buys land, he'd probably have well over $10, $12 million. I would let the property build, the tax rate would build, that would be a pretty good little chunk of money.
You've been in the neighborhood of around somewhere between $900,000 and $100,000.
And I tell you, $2 million looks like, I talked to some commissioners, they said, I said, what is the advantage for selling? And they said, to get the money. Well, I mean, you know, that's, that's like, when, when money is not gonna last long and when that runs out, then what are you gonna sell it to get some money? I mean, manage the money you've got, you know? There's not gonna be money, there's not gonna be something to sell every time you need money. Most of everybody's experienced that, but I mean, some of the people I'm sure have... That brings the big deal back into question, like you, if you knew what I'm gonna do if I miss that million and a half, we could have gotten, gotten the property back.
If he what now?
Brings the deal back into question. Something what we're debating is whether or not we get the option. If, if he does build, we're gonna miss a million and a half dollars that we could have gotten, get the property back.
If he builds, if he builds, you're gonna have the property out, you're gonna have the building and the, and the property sitting on it.
Yeah, but if we don't sell it, we're gonna miss that million and a half dollars if he builds, since his con, since his contract's out. So it's an iffy situation, I agree with you, and I don't know what the answer is.
I think that...
But it, it's hard to say that it's gonna cost the county a million and a half dollars that they got if they get the property back in the seven years.
Commissioner Bell, you have some news?
Yes, it seems like we're largely somewhat back to where we were two months ago and he's not going to bet against himself, didn't expect it. And, and I don't know that anybody really negotiating with him or made a counter offer that would be of significance, that would change our decision making. It just seemed to me to be a priceless thing since we've got to make, we don't have past made, but we've got to make. I don't like being in a hurry, I'd like to know as much as possible and to know exactly what we can get out of it as much, maybe max is what's on the sheet. You used to be a card dealer, you always had a miracle with the first offer.
I would try, I would try to first on that, I'd put, put me through that, which I don't have, so I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you anything out now like that.
My thoughts are, I'm not a great businessman, skilled person, negotiating big deals like this. It would seem that before we can make a true decision on what final offer, it would be nice to later, I don't know, potentially put one commissioner on and you can pick someone else you want to negotiate, have the attorney present and negotiate, make an offer and make it out, you know, on his part to us, and just see if we, what he's really willing to offer, how much this...
You talked to him already.
Yeah.
Where did you just say?
Terry, I talked to him today, he, he told me he wasn't gonna offer any more. You know, he was a real estate trust guy before he got into the nursing home business. And I, especially the public, the rest of the commissioners, he's always been very, very nice, not arrogant, not obnoxious type of person, every time I've ever talked to him. And he said to me, he said, he said, I don't have to give you that much money for the building, says, when those buildings like that, when he was in the real estate trust, went back out on the market, they didn't break at $180, $250,000. He said, they may break more now, but says, I don't know what you would do with the building.
You know, he was a real estate trust guy before he got into the nursing home business. And I, especially the public, the rest of the commissioners, he's always been very, very nice, not arrogant, not, uh, obnoxious type of person. Every time I've ever talked to him, and he said to me, he says, he says, I don't have to give you that much money for the building, says, when those buildings like that, when he was in the real estate trust, went back out on the market, they didn't break at a hundred and eighty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He said they may break more now, but says, I don't know what you would do with the building, that's the question that I posed to the public before. Uh, it's, uh, you know, a building like that, you can't use it, he will not let you use it for, if he gives it back to us, if we sell it to him and he gives it back to us, we can't use it for a rehab, we can't use it for a nursing home. He's got those licenses, you can't use it for even one of them. So, you know, if you, if you decide to, it's not the way it said before, just kind of rolling the dice on those things, and I know there's a lot of sentimental stuff on it. To be honest with you, a, a lot of conversations, I'm sure you can add before this thing. I'm personally in favor of just, if he gives us the May meeting, then let's wait.
Barry, you have something to say?
Yes, I just have a few questions. Why is Mr. Sheen not here to address these questions that the public has?
Why would he have to be?
Because there's a lot of questions that people would like to have answered.
We, we asking those, we asking those questions?
A lot of ifs and buts and maybes and buts and this and that. Has the nursing home committee or the board met with Mr. Sheen and had discussions?
So, I've talked to him, I, I've offered him at my office, and, or, y'all give me a phone number and call it off, nothing like that. No, I always say, like, Chris.
Beverly, could, could you give a ballpark figure? What is it, five point four acres of property that the building sits on, is that a total derive?
It's, it was between five and six, I think.
Close to six acres, I think. That included the ballpark.
Do you have a, a, a close figure on, on, uh, for what the value of that, that property is?
I think we have it appraised at about one point nine billion, but to say that's a hundred percent accurate, buddy, I can't, because it has been exempted property for years, and it has not been reviewed like taxable property would have been reviewed. Um, so that's what's on the tax rolls as exempt is one point nine million. Is that right?
I think it's right.
That's what we looked at, one point nine million. Um, now, if that was taxable, um, two million dollars, we were looking at around twenty thousand.
Nineteen to twenty, I think.
Nineteen to twenty thousand dollars, I think, in tax dollars, on that property. But now, it may go up, you know, if I go out and look at it and I decide that it's bad and too low, then I can change. But it has not been reviewed because it's been exempt property.
If he thought that, decided now, it'd be appraised, it would immediately go on the tax roll, right?
Yes.
In addition, we're, we're not paying any taxes for getting rent, but the, the way the building, your building is going to tax roll, it's going to tax roll.
That one, that one fifteen, I guess, is a pilot on that.
Unless y'all choose to do a pilot agreement.
Okay, well, I, I just wonder.
The pilot was in the deal about the.
A pilot's been in the lease deal, but I mean, you could do a pilot even if you purchased it.
Yeah.
One of the things for the public, the state agencies that I contacted, and I contacted several of them, told me, every one of them told me, says, Mr. Sullivan says there's just, in fact, she has told me today. One of the counties fell by the wayside, I think there's five counties in the state of Tennessee with, with, that operate nursing homes now. And, and they're not going to be any before long, and we're hoping now, uh, but nobody, counties are not staying, every agency told me, says, counties are not staying in the nursing home business now. May, maybe that we should ignore what they say, but I understand, you can ignore what people say. But if everybody else is getting out of it, is that, is that not counted?
At least, I'd like to, I'd like to scroll with that.
Forward, yeah.
Actually, we, uh, Chester County has not been in the nursing home business in some time, all we have is the building. I know, our, our last is not been in Chester County, right? Never, I don't know if it ever was.
It never was.
But, uh, the deal is just to, uh.
Chris, do you not see what's happening on what you're talking about, though, that, do you not see the, what's going on with this, it's what that is amounts to, is big businesses, it's taking over small businesses and running their business for them? That's just what's happening, and I guess, go and say what you may see.
I would, I would argue that the county is not a business, county is a governing.
Excuse me?
The county is not a business, it is a governing body.
They're running the nursing home, is what I'm saying, and I'm just saying.
We don't run the nursing home either.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying, though, is this guy is buying up nursing homes, he owns a lot of nursing homes. Uh, I'm just saying that he is building him an empire, obviously, a big business. And you know what happens to big business, the bigger they get, they look for somebody bigger than they are to take them on. So what we wind up with, we wind up with very little control of what used to belong to us, and we still, for goodness sakes, we should try to keep a little hold on.
We don't have much control of that now, because we own the building, doesn't it?
Well, if you're getting, uh, if you're getting that rent, although, that money, although, every year, and you're getting tied down for at least two more years, I'd say the county's been a pretty good operating one, right now, and because it belongs to us.
Not costing us anything, not costing us anything.
And, and I know it's a tough decision, but I know, I know it's, Dwayne, I know it means something to him, I know he's in a, in a situation, but we just, here's what bothers me about this thing, and I'm not, I love every one of y'all on there, somebody got a little bit of a brother. But that thing, I was just starting to talk about this thing, uh, two months ago, and I believe it was ready to vote on it.
That's where I live, with you, the fact that I don't see what new information, you know, I'm not making a motion to sell the nursing home.
No, you're saying?
I would say.
So my discussion is ended?
No, no, I, I wasn't, we've got a motion mistaken on the floor, now that we're discussing some more.
Well, I was going to further say that this thing was going to be done, did he vote to sell it?
He made a motion to sell, yes.
Well, I was going to say this thing would have happened, uh, back in January, had there not been some discussion on it. I think there was people here ready to make a motion and vote on this thing back in January. Then they, then as the meeting progressed, uh, they unanimously decided that there was questions they didn't understand, so they put this thing off. So what that tells me is that there was people ready to come and vote, whether voting yes or no, they were ready to come and vote on something that they didn't fully understand. So I hope that's not the question, not the situation tonight. Uh, but that was the situation.
Yeah, it was.
It would be voted on, it would have been voted on some month and a half, two months ago. And I, like I said, it doesn't matter to me what you voted yes or you voted no, but you did throw the vote to put this thing off, to get some more information on it. So that, well, this tells me, and I think the citizens of this county, that, uh, somebody here would have opted for voting, so you'd have been voting on something that you didn't understand. I hope that's not the case, there's still some.
That's certainly for each of us individually to, that's certainly for each of us individually to make sure we have as much information as possible.
Do y'all have all that information now?
Well, Mr. Chairman, in, in what's been said, and, and talking with several people now in Florida history, uh, uh, I don't understand why, and even though he's the corporate head, does he think that we're all ridiculous? That he will come down here and sit down and talk to us face to face, not just to the county community, but to this public county? They're the ones that, that has to deal with it.
You called Nashville, say?
I, I don't intend to call.
Okay. I've called four times, talked to them the last four weeks. Is any discussion?
We got the motion on the floor in a second. Can we, can we, uh, steal my motion to table it, or we have to?
You have to vote on that motion first.
Go on this motion first.
One thing, the future property taxes on that building or any other building he might build, really is not something you can count on either, because in other counties, nursing homes have been set up as nonprofit organizations, and there's no taxes on them, it's waived, taxes on them. So if he were to actually come in and set it up as a nonprofit organization, in this county, you wouldn't get anything as far as property tax.
And he did that one time in Johnston City?
Yeah.
He told me.
As for the symptomality side of this thing, word, that's, to be honest, regarding the issue of nursing home, and I don't know, like, no, that's really not what we're here to discuss, but it's what everybody's concerned about. I've had lots of family out there, and probably everybody in the room has had somebody here that you care very much about, and when it comes to the nursing home, the most important thing about the nursing home is it provides excellent, quality care locally to our elderly, their need or, or disabled, various ones who need it. When I researched it, they're a five star, uh, their staffing is not as high as I like it to be, but it meets the standards. Uh, and they're a good quality nursing. It's, but in reality, whether we vote to sell it or not to sell it, we have zero influence as a legislative body here at the county level on how they operate their thing. We just don't. The influence on that is at the state level where they're licensed, and where they receive all their guidance, that's where that is. Bottom line, tonight, it was a bunch of them. I may call them up and give them a good shoot, and then take care of our elderly, but it doesn't matter as regard to this decision, but it's down to, is the sheer nuts of both the facts and dollars per cent? Because that's really all we have influence on, in place of weight by. And I think we're down, we want to take the offer, we want to look for another one. Is it a put up or shut up, or just take our chances?
Barry, please, man.
Yes, sir. I tell you right now, the butterflies fly, I'd be getting them in formation, so you have to bear with me. But if I was as smart as I was when I was eighteen years old, I would tell, I'd be able to tell you all what you need to do, but I'm not. But I, I, I can't see our gain by selling. Uh, I've dealt with some pretty big shots, and I've dealt with some shasters. They're still out there. So y'all be extremely careful. Somebody are very young compared to them, and I, I done told you I wasn't very smart, I was back years ago. But there, I think you, you don't like to vote on it. You know the shasters out there, all they have, they have, their best thing is their money, and this is what this guy seems to make. Uh, and to threaten, that's not the correct way to do business as a gentleman, to threaten somebody. So look at it carefully, if you will. I'm proud of those, go near it, but I've got a lot of memories, I, I go to the nursing home quite often, I was out there for a couple hours this afternoon. But please be careful what you do. Like I say, somebody very young, inexperienced, you're talking about a lot of money, I've never had, I've never had that, I've never had the privilege or had the opportunity to, to deal with hundreds or thousands, we're talking about some millions. I don't know, y'all probably all major for all I know, but, 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 but be careful with shasters.
Mr. Billy, who did he threaten?
Sir?
Who did he threaten?
Well, he's, he's threatened to bail the United, he's threatened the county.
Well, he said that he would, he said he would. He didn't threaten.
You know, I see a, I see a train, but I've been sent here listening all this, and I see a train. Right now, I sure do, and I understand, a little wine.
Call for a question, Mr. Chairman, leave that since January, and everybody's got to speak their piece, call for a question, Chris, and call for a little question. Let me hear if you say that, remember, if you call a question, a little more question.
Mr. Chairman, could we have the motion read back to us?
Yeah.
Is it read?
No, of course not, everyone is. There's a question for you. If you pass the question, all discussion is stopped, we can vote on the motion.
You vote to put it in discussion.
Uh, that's what the question does, it stops all discussion. And once the question is called for, if fourteen people stand, I can't have anyone. According to Robert Rule, the order, when the question is called, all discussion stops. Clear? All right, all right.
Yes, sir.
Ready?
Roll call.
Johnny Gardner?
Yes.
Jerry Love?
No.
Larry Blackstone?
Yes.
Al McKenna?
No.
Jackie Butler?
No.
Tim Crow?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
No.
Russell Clayton?
No.
Buddy Richards?
No.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyer?
Yes.
Joseph Malero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
John Whetland?
Yes.
Mike Allen Bennett? Twelve, four, six again.
Okay, so the question passed, so we can vote on the motion now. A roll call on the motion.
Johnny Gardner?
The thing was the motion to re-read.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The motion was simply made to sell the nursing home. Tell them, tell them, tell them. Johnny Gardner?
Yes.
Jerry Love?
Yes.
Larry Blackstone?
Yes.
Al McKenna?
No.
Jackie Butler?
No.
Tim Crow?
Yes.
Russell Clayton?
Ish.
Buddy Richards?
No.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyer?
Yes.
Joseph Malero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
John Whetland?
Yes.
Mike Allen Bennett?
Yes.
All right, four again, it's fourteen, four.
Chris, the motion passed then, okay, thank you. I know this has been a touchy situation, it has been for me and for everybody, so, you know, like I told you, I don't, I don't know what's the best thing to do, but we, probably voted to, to set, so that's all we're going to do. The next item, I need to appoint four members to the board, four member board, we're selling the land for, for the length of taxes. We've got about, I think, six or seven parcels of land that we may have to give a part of away, I don't know if you're, get back on tax cover, but, um, I'd like to put Jackie Butler, Barry Smith, Jerry Love, and Russell Clayton on that board.
Do you have a motion?
Do you have a motion for that?
Motion perfect.
Say it. Well, the main thing, if we approve this board of Jackie Butler, Jerry Love, Barry Smith, and Russell Clayton, and myself will be on there also, but just on there. Is any question on that, any discussion on that? If, on Thursday, I?
Aye.
Post no, motion Jerry. Does anyone else have any other business to go before the board? I would, I would like to say this much, too, uh, Mr. Renar called me today, and he wants to have a solid waste committee meeting on March the thirty first at six o'clock at the solid waste office. I know Jackie Butler's on there, uh, John Love's on there, Mr. Moore's on there, Plankton Cherry Bell's on there, with that four. Mr. Moore, who else is on there, get the government up? I know it's Jackie. Oh, oh, who are you? Oh, Johnny Moore Carter's on there.
Are you sure?
I lost your name right for a minute.
I don't have to charge the dog, it's a thing, what else?
You got, you got that, too.
Where would you put all of these? What's your date on that?
March thirty first. Thirty first, at the solid waste office. We're sending your letter at six o'clock. I think the company may have a, a, a sandwich or some kind for you. All right, if no other business, you go charge the digits.
Your honor, there's one gentleman that is blind, mindful ticker, works for Chester County Board of Education. Motion charged.
Motion made to charge Richard, who is like, uh?
Black ticker.
Black ticker? Say your second. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Motion Jerry. With no other business, uh, do you have anything? Black, you're, Marty. Okay, so here, move to the jury.
This is jury.
Jury.
All of you say aye?
Aye.